Okay.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. We're into our afternoon session. I'm sorry we ran late this morning. During the declared emergency in the city of Toronto, Committee of Adjustment Virtual Public Hearings are being conducted by electronic means through WebEx, an online digital platform, and streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel. These measures are necessary to comply with physical distancing requirements and in-person attendance limitations. This will be a virtual public hearing, and participants who have registered in advance will be able to make their presentations to the committee using WebEx, an online event that is being hosted by city staff. Anyone wishing to view the hearing may do so by watching it on YouTube. Participants who have registered in advance will be connecting either by their computer, a phone or tablet app, or by telephone. All participants are automatically muted on entry. When your item is called, each participant will be unmuted by the moderator, one person at a time. Only the committee members will be participating by video. Any registered participants will be participating by audio only. We ask that you also mute your devices until you are called on to speak. For all those who are waiting online, please ensure that you have called in with the phone number that you originally registered with. If you call in with a different number, you will not be able to speak on the item. To ensure audio clarity, I suggest that you do not use the speakerphone function on your telephones. We acknowledge the land we are meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Anishna Bay, the Chipewa, the Haudenosaunee, and the Wendat peoples, and is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit, and Matisse peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty 13 with the Mississaugas of the Credit. In accordance with Sections forty-five and fifty-three of the Planning Act 1990 as amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment of the City of Toronto is called to order. My name is Alan Smithies, and I will chair today's meeting. Joining us on the panel today are Stan Kumerick, Michi McCloskey, Neil Palmer, and Sophia Riddick. City staff are also present. Adam Barcella, Philip Carvelino, and Angelica Zortzos. The Committee of Adjustment considers applications for variances from the provisions of the zoning bylaw that apply to property, permission to extend or alter lawful non-conforming uses, and consent to sever property to create new lots. Anyone today who wants to receive a copy of the committee's decision must submit a written request for a decision by email. Please ensure that you include your name, address, and email address, because Committee of Adjustment and the T-Lab will be sending notifications and appeal updates by email. If you do not agree with the committee's decision, it may be appealed to the Toronto local appeal body, T-Lab, or in some limited circumstances to the Ontario Land Tribunal. Appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the committee's decision. The hearing procedure is as follows. I will call each item in the order listed on the agenda. Where an application is uncontested, the agent or applicant will proceed with their presentation, if desired. If the committee does not require a presentation, applicants are to advise the chair should they wish to speak on the item. The committee may ask questions and/or take the matter into the committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant or agent, is given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. I will comment when you are reaching the five-minute limit. When addressing the committee, please state clearly your name and address. Please remember to confine your remarks to the matters described in the application. The applicant or agent proceeds first and will make their presentation to the committee. Please note that the committee may not entertain revisions to proposals at the hearing today. To ensure that a revised application is accurate, and that all those entitled to notice of the application are informed of the changes, the committee may decide to defer the application if it has been substantially revised. Then individuals either in support or opposed to the application are invited to speak. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after they have finished their presentation. When all speakers are finished, the applicant or agent has an opportunity to rebut only those issues that were raised by the previous speakers. This marks the end of discussion on the item. The application is then taken into committee for a decision. Are there any conflicts of interest that the committee members would like to declare for this afternoon's session? Mr. Palmer?
Neil Palmer? Yes, Item seventeen forty-seven Oakfield Drive. I used to live on Oakfield up until recently, so I know the applicant and any potential objectives, so I'll just withdraw myself on the panel for that.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Okay, we will now go to our afternoon agenda. I have... First on our agenda is Item number seventeen forty-seven Oakfield Drive. Mr. Palmer has excused himself. I have one person registered to speak. That's David Eagleman. Are you there, sir?
Good afternoon, Sir Chair and Committee Members. I am here. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can hear you, sir. Can I get your full name and address, please?
Yes, David Eagleman, nine hundred the East Mall, Suite three hundred.
Okay, thank you, sir. I wanted to... We have one comment on file with your application. It's from Urban Forestry, and they're recommending that your application be refused because it may require removing a city-owned false cypress tree. Would you like to respond to that comment?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. I am aware of the Urban Forestry comments regarding this application, and although they are recommending refusal, they do recommend conditions if the application were to be approved today, and these conditions are acceptable. Even with an approval of this application, a permit to injure or destroy any regulated tree will still be required prior to a building permit being issued.
Now, can I ask, sir, does this tree have to be removed?
Through you, Mr. Chair, with the current proposal and the location of the driveway, the tree does have to be removed. So, yes.
Okay, so you understand that there is a possibility that you could end up in front of community council if Urban Forestry doesn't want that tree removed? So you understand the risks associated?
Through you, Mr. Chair, I do understand those risks.
Okay, thank you. It's pretty clear what you're asking for in your application, sir. We've got three variances before us. Again, the only comment we have from staff was from Urban Forestry. I'll just ask, is there anything you'd like to tell the committee that isn't in the material we have before us this afternoon?
Through you, Mr. Chair, there is nothing I need to add.
Okay, thank you. I'll just ask the committee, does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, could I get a motion on this application, please? Mr. Kumerick?
I'll chime in. I find the application to be satisfactory in meeting the four tests and minor. I would therefore like to move approval, subject to forestry condition number two with regards to some private trees.
Thank you, Mr. Kumerick. Summon to second that motion. Ms. McCloskey seconds. All those in favor? That motion carries unanimously. Sir, your application's been unanimously approved, subject to urban forestry conditions.
Thank you, Sir Chair and Committee Members.
Thank you, sir. We're now on Item number eighteen, seventy-three Grove Dale Avenue. I have two people registered to speak. And the first one is Rafael Tayuan Kim. Are you there?
Good afternoon, I'm here, sir.
Yes, hello. I just wanted to ask, can I get your full name and address, please?
My name is Rafael Tayuan Kim, and I'm here to represent seventy-three Grove Dale.
Okay, thank you, sir. I just wanted to ask, we have a report from City Planning dated the twenty-eighth of June, and they are recommending that your application be refused. Now, would you like the application heard today, or would you like to defer the application so that you can discuss this further with City Planning?
I would like to have the application heard today.
Okay, in view of... You have read that City Planning report?
Could I double-check, sir?
Have you read the City Planning report, sir?
Oh, yes, I have read it, yeah.
Okay, well, then, if you could give the committee a brief presentation on why you feel that we should approve your application?
Yes, sir. So we're here to propose that detached, new construction of the detached of the two-story house with attached garage. We feel strongly that this is exceptionally deep lot that we're looking at, and... And what we are trying to do is here is that there is currently a detached garage placed at the back, and that is the line that we are following to propose this new build, and also to try to compensate the space that are lost by moving the garage into the front and incorporating the garage into the attached, into the house rather than being detached. Also, I'd like to mention that there were some concerns about the trees, and then I'd like to mention that the trees will be protected, and all trees in the premises will be preserved, other than the two fruit trees that are dead already. And also that this will be the home for the family of four, and including, one of which would be included as a senior citizen. So that is why we are proposing this extension of the building lengths to accommodate the needs for the large family.
Okay, thank you, sir. Does the committee have any questions?
Thank you.
Anything further to add, sir?
That's it, sir.
Okay, thank you. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, we'll go to the next person on our list. I have a David Francisco. Are you there, sir?
I'm actually, don't have any objections. I'm actually more listening than anything else.
Yes, hello, sir. Can I get your full name and address, please?
David Francisco, seventy-five Grove Dale Avenue.
Okay, thank you. If you'd like to give us your thoughts on this application?
Okay, with it, like I said, I'm just more listening than anything else. See how it impacts myself, that's all.
Pardon me?
Mention, I'm not here to object anything. I'm more listening in so that I could see if there's, you know, how things impact myself.
Sir, we're not hearing you correctly. You're going in and out. Can you...
He has no comments, sir.
Okay, would you like to make a comment on this application?
We can hear him clearly on the phone, and he has no comments, Mr. Chair.
I just thought he may still want to make a comment. All right. We'll go back to the agent. Just ask, sir, is there anything else you'd like to add?
Well, one thing I'd like to add, when we were designing this house, we knew that this was quite a deep house. So what we did is, anything beyond that seventeen meter that are allowed, we're not adding any windows on the side to guarantee the privacy of the neighbor adjacent units, seventy-one Grove Dale and seventy-five Grove Dale.
Okay, thank you. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, could I get a motion on this application, please?
I'm uncomfortable with this application, so I'm going to move for denial of it. I think the length is excessive, and it's got a pretty big lot there, so I don't understand why he's got to get reduction on the side yards as well. So I don't find the application meets the four tests in the Planning Act, so I recommend refusal.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Ms. Riddick seconds that. All those in favor? That motion carries. Sir, your application's been refused. Thank you very much. Item number nineteen, eighteen, nineteen, four thirteen, the Kingsway? We have...
Yes.
One person registered to speak. That is Michael Goldberg. Are you there, sir?
I am.
Mr. Goldberg, are you there?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes. Can I get your full name and address, please?
Goldberg Group, twenty ninety-eight Avenue Road, Toronto, M five M, four A eight.
Okay, thank you, sir. I just wanted to mention, I was going through your file. There's a couple of reports listed there. City Planning has a report dated the twenty-ninth of June indicating that they have no objections to your application, provided that you modify variance number six for the building height from eleven point eight nine meters to ten point nine eight meters, that the proposed development is constructed as illustrated in the front elevation plan submitted on the twenty-fifth of June, and held on file by the committee as it relates to the proposed number of stories. All new windows shall be constructed with bird-friendly treatments. New exterior light fixtures shall be dark sky compliant, and new planting on the subject site and along the streets frontage shall be of native species. There's also a report from Urban Forestry that recommends refusal due to the possible removal of a privately owned red oak tree. So what I wanted to ask, sir, with respect to City Planning, were you proposing to modify variance number six?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we filed a waiver which modified that variance, and we are fine with modifying that variance because we've entered into extensive discussion with City Planning and with other departments as well. The waiver, I can advise you, has since been confirmed with a zoning note.
Sir, can I just ask, you're proposing to change variance number six? So right now it reads the proposed dwelling will have a flat roof height of eleven point eight six meters. You're proposing to reduce that to ten point nine eight meters. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. And with respect to the... With respect to the... Urban forestry recommendation, would you like to give the committee a little insight onto this issue with the red oak tree? Does that have to come down?
It does not need to have, it does not need to come down, and we are pleased to, it doesn't affect the building at all. It affects sort of the driveway configuration. There is an existing circular driveway on this property, and if we stay closer to the existing driveway configuration in that location, plus add some permeable pavers, there should be no problem in preserving the tree whatsoever. And we would suggest, because it doesn't affect at all the rest of the application, that the committee please consider this. We would have no objection, of course. We have to, in any event, go through a permit to injure the tree, and of course, we would go through that process with Urban Forestry.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. I'll just ask the committee, does the committee have any... We have no deputants on this item. Is there... Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? He has modified variance, he's proposing to modify variance number six as requested by City Planning. So does the committee have any questions of the speaker? Mr. Palmer?
Yeah. Mr. Goldberg, can you just clarify? I've got in my notes here, and I can't find it, but variance number nine, is that still required?
That's number nine.
For the second-floor deck area?
Oh, okay. So, no. We are no longer asking for a second-floor deck at all, so we are only asking for the third-floor platform. So to the extent that the first part of variance number nine, where it says the two proposed second-story platforms will have an area of seventeen oh seven square meters, that can be deleted altogether, but the third-floor platform will continue to have an area of twenty-four point eight two.
Okay, sir, so, and further to Mr. Palmer's questions, you're proposing to modify variance number nine as well as variance number six?
Yes.
Okay, so how is that wording to read?
I would just say, start the second part, or the variance part of the sentence that just says the proposed third-story rear platform will have an area of twenty-four point eight two square meters, and everything before that, you just delete.
Okay, so what you're proposing in that is that the line that reads the two proposed second-story rear platforms will have an area of seventeen point zero seven square meters, that gets removed?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. So the only thing that remains is the proposed third-story rear platform will have an area of twenty-four point eight two square meters?
Correct, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any further questions?
Chair?
I'm sorry?
Palmer, again, to Mr. Goldberg, is variance number eight affected? Because that's, I think, the number of platforms above the first floor?
Yes, that is deleted.
Variance eight is deleted entirely?
Correct.
Okay. Can you just clarify any other variances that may have changed?
There are no other variances that have changed, other than the overall height of the building.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we have variance six is modified, variance eight is deleted, and variance nine is modified. Is that correct, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Is there, there's no other variances that you propose to change?
Correct.
Thank you. Does the committee have any further questions of the speaker? Can I get a motion on this revised application, please?
So I will move to approve...
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. McCloskey. Go ahead.
Oh, okay. I thought Stan was wanting to say something. I'll move to approve the application, subject to planning's conditions, in addition to modification of variance six, removal of variance eight, and modification of variance nine with urban forestry conditions. I believe it's one and two.
There's also the urban city planning conditions regarding the bird-friendly...
Yes. Yes, as well as all of planning's conditions as well.
Thank you. Summon to second Ms. McCloskey's motion. Mr. Palmer seconds. All those in favor? That motion carries unanimously. Sir, your revised application's been unanimously approved, subject to city planning and urban forestry conditions.
Thank you so much. Have a nice day.
Thank you. Now, on thirty-eight Smithwood Drive, I have one person registered to speak. That is the agent, Yaso Somalingam. I probably mispronounced that, sir. Are you there?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is Yaso Somalingam. I am the authorized agent on this application.
Yes, thank you. Can I get your full name and address, please?
Yaso Somalingam, eight fifty Tapscott Road, Unit fifty-one, Toronto, M on X, one N four.
Yeah, thank you very much, sir. I note that we only have one comment from staff registered on your file. That's from Urban Forestry, a recommended condition. I think it's pretty clear what you're asking for in the variances we have before us today. Is there anything you'd like to tell the committee that isn't in the material that we have before us today?
No, we have, I'm fine. I'm acceptable to urban forestry conditions, and we're already working towards that.
Okay, thank you. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, could I get a motion on this application, please? Mr. Kumerick?
I feel the, I find the application to be minor and meeting the four tests, and I would therefore look to approval, subject to forestry condition number three.
Thank you, Mr. Kumerick. Summon to second that motion? Ms. McCloskey seconds. All those in favor? That motion carries unanimously. Sir, your application's been unanimously approved, subject to urban forestry conditions.
Thank you very much. Thank you both.
Thank you. Item number twenty-one, pardon me, one twenty-seven Wimbledon Avenue. I have one person registered to speak. That's David Eagleman. Are you there, sir?
Yes, I am here, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon again, fellow committee members.
I have, just going through your file, I note that there's only one comment from staff, and that's from Urban Forestry, a recommended condition. Is there, it's pretty clear what you're asking for in the three variances that we, the committee has before it. Is there anything that you'd like to tell the committee that isn't contained in the material that we have before us this afternoon?
Through you, Mr. Chair, there is nothing I need to add.
Okay, thank you, sir. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, could I get a motion on this application, please?
I move to approve this application. I find it to be minor in nature and consistent with the four tests, subject to urban forestry condition number two.
Thank you very much, Ms. Riddick. Summon to second that motion. Mr. Palmer seconds. All those in favor? The motion carries unanimously. Sir, your application's been unanimously approved, subject to urban forestry conditions.
Thank you, Sir Chair and Committee Members. Have a great day.
Thank you. Item number twenty-two, fifty-three Cherry Lawn Avenue. I have four people registered to speak. And the first is the agent, Daniel Falzon. Are you there, sir?
Yes, I'm here, Chair, members of the committee. My name is Daniel Falzon. I'm here on behalf of the owner of fifty-three Cherry Lawn.
Thank you, sir. I note that in your file, there is a report from City Planning dated the twenty-ninth of June. They appear to have no objection, provided that the proposed development is constructed as illustrated on the architectural plan submitted sixteenth of June, held on file by the Committee of Adjustment as they relate to the proposed building length for only a one-story structure. So, sir, we have other deputants here, so if you'd like to give the committee a brief presentation on what you see as the merits of your proposal?
Yep. Essentially, the lot is currently, the lot currently has a coverage of thirty-nine percent. We're proposing to remove an existing covered porch, so the rear yard, the rear yard porch is built in with a concrete foundation and is enclosed with a roof, so that will be removed, and a fairly oversized shed will also be removed. So with the current coverage of thirty-nine percent, once we account for what's being removed, we're only proposing forty point six percent, which is one point six, an increase of one point six percent. That's the, I believe that what we're asking for is minor in nature, and it should meet the four tests. Additionally, there is an addition at the neighbor to the north. We're not protruding much further than he is. And to the south, with respect to the south, the increase in protrusion to the rear yard is only actually three point six feet, which is just over a meter, one point one meters. That's really, that's my case.
Okay, thank you, sir. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, we'll go to the next person on the list. I have a Jürgen Friedrich. Are you there, sir?
Yes, I am here. Fiona Gross is the main speaker, so defer to her first, please.
Yes, sir, can I get your, your name and address, please?
Sure. My name is Jürgen Friedrich, and I live at six thirty-one Planting Place in Newmarket, Ontario.
Okay, thank you. So if you'd like to give us your thoughts on this application?
Okay. I, my aunt Fiona has a speech to, or has some comments to provide. I guess I will, I'm hoping she has the ability to speak, but I'm not sure why my name was chosen first. We believe that this is, these variances are not, these variances are major, especially the first one, which is thirty-six percent greater than what the bylaw states, and we're very confused as to why that's being allowed, because this will negatively affect the openness of the backyard and the view from our backyard, the view from the back bedroom windows, and it'll greatly increase the sunlight being reflected into our garden from the walls that are being constructed as a result of the addition. The other concerns we have are the breaking of sixty-year-old basement walls and exterior walls has a high possibility to cause structural damage and other, and drainage and seepage into the, this is a detached, semi-detached structure, right? So we are the attached neighbors, and so we respectfully request that this application be rejected.
Okay, thank you, sir. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? Being none?
Mr. Chair, just a clarification. I believe the speaker is representing the owners of fifty-one Cherry Lawn Avenue.
Yes, I understand.
That's correct.
There's also another person who wants to speak from that address. There's also another person who wants to speak from that address as well.
There should be three others at least, but.
There's Fiona Gross. Are you there?
Yes, yes, your chairman, I'm here.
Yes, would you like to speak to this application?
I do have a small speech that I have prepared.
Okay, if you'd like, if you'd like to give us your thoughts on the application?
I would very much. And I wish you all good afternoon, and my name is Fiona Gross, and I am one of the owners of fifty-one Cherry Lawn Avenue, which as you now know, is a semi-detached home attached to fifty-three Cherry Lawn Avenue. My family and I have owned and lived in the semi-detached, single-family dwelling since nineteen-sixty-seven for over fifty-four years. This property, our home, is part of our retirement plan. When we, when we learned that the owners of fifty-three have a plan to construct a one-story rear addition, we have some strong concerns. We worry and we are concerned about how this one-story rear addition is going to affect our physical property, our property value, our property taxes, the property resale potential, the potential property damage due to breaking the exterior basement walls of this sixty-year-old structure, the effect on the openness of our yard, the water drainage into and out of our backyard, and its effect on our garden. The resulting sunlight, as my nephew said, reflecting into our garden from the over-eight-foot-high and almost thirteen-foot-long wall that will be jutting alongside our backyard, the grading of the property, the resulting view from our back bedroom windows, the effect of our privacy. We're hoping that this committee can guide us to a city agency that can address our concerns. According to the notice of public hearing, the proposed construction of the one-story rear addition at fifty-three Cherry Lawn is requesting to exceed zoning bylaws. We consider the variances to the four identified zoning bylaws to be major, as they all exceed the allowed maximums enacted by the city. Specifically, in reverse order as presented in the notice of public meeting, item number four, section ten eighty forty seventy-two B, bylaw five sixty-nine twenty thirteen, minimum required rear yard setback. This is five meters, about five percent greater than the minimum allowed by the bylaw. Item three, section ten eighty forty thirty-one, bylaw five sixty-nine twenty thirteen, maximum permitted building length depth, my bad. This is about one meter or almost five percent greater than the maximum allowed in the bylaw. Item two, section ten eighty forty twenty-one, bylaw five sixty-nine twenty thirteen, maximum permitted building length. This is over three-point-five meters or almost twenty-one percent greater than the maximum allowed in the bylaw. Item number one, section ten eighty forty twenty-one, bylaw five sixty-nine twenty thirteen, maximum permitted building length. This is over three-point-five meters, almost twenty-one percent greater than the maximum allowed in the bylaw.
That was an item one.
I'm sorry, back up. That was item number two. Item number one, section ten eighty thirty forty-one A, bylaw five sixty-nine twenty thirteen, maximum permitted dwelling coverage of the lot area. This is over thirty-five square meters or almost thirty-six percent greater than the maximum allowed in the bylaw, almost thirty-six percent greater. These major variances to the zoning bylaw will have significant consequences on our property, namely, they will negatively affect the openness of our backyard, they will negatively affect our view from within our backyard, they will negatively affect our view from our back bedroom windows, they will greatly increase the sunlight reflecting into our garden, the water drainage into and out of our backyard will have a negative effect on our garden. This has caused us to experience an excruciating amount of stress and has been having a negative effect on our mental and physical health and well-being. The breaking of sixty-year-old basement and exterior walls has a high probability of causing structural damage, drainage, and seepage to the semi-detached structure. The smallest oversight will cause a myriad of problems.
Adam, can you summarize, please?
I am just getting to it, sir. Thank you.
Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? I have one last person registered to speak. That's Alison Ball. Are you there? Alison Ball, B-A-L-L, are you there?
She, she was here earlier, but now perhaps she dropped off.
Okay, so we'll drop her off the list. We'll go back to Mr. Falzon. Mr. Falzon, are you there? Mr. Falzon, are you there?
Yes, Mr. Chair, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, I can hear you. You've heard from the, from the two previous speakers, if you'd like to respond to their concerns?
Yes. Yes, I have. I will address, I'm happy to address their concerns. First off, from the structural perspective, we're not blowing out the rear foundation walls. If you look at the plans, we're just, we will be removing two portions to, to create two entries into the addition. So structurally, I mean, even if we were blowing out the walls, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't negatively affect their property, but it surely isn't here. With respect to coverage, like I mentioned earlier, we're only increasing the coverage by one-point-six percent. The current, the current houses, as they lay on the lot, including that of the neighbor, they currently exceed the bylaws. I take it that the bylaws were, were written after the subdivision was approved. Really, that's, that's, that's what I have really here.
Okay, thank you, sir. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? Could I get a motion on this application, please? Could I get him, Mr. Kumerick?
I'll chime in. I understand the concerns of the neighbor. I want to note that the proposed addition is to the north of the neighbor, not to the south, so it won't be affecting reduction of any sunlight. And overall, I do find the application to be, to be minor, and therefore I would like to propose approval.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kumerick, that's approval subject to the city planning condition?
Sorry, yes, to planning conditions one, two, three, four, and five, also subject to forestry conditions one and two. Oh, sorry, I'm looking at the wrong file.
No, no. We just have the one planning condition.
Just, yes, the one planning condition. That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Summon to second Mr. Kumerick's motion. Ms. McCloskey seconds. All those in favor? That motion carries unanimously. Sir, your application is unanimously approved, subject to city planning conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Item number twenty-three, eight Ramsbury Road. I have one person registered to speak. That is Joe Sabatino. Are you there, sir?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the committee.
Thank you.
My name is Joe Sabatino. I'm at thirty-four Moynes Avenue, and I'm the applicant.
Thank you very much. Just going through your file, sir, I noticed that there is a report from City Planning dated the fifth of July. They have no objection to your application, provided that the proposed development is constructed as illustrated on the architectural drawing submitted May fourteenth and held on file by the committee, as it relates to the second floor length not exceeding beyond seventeen-point-zero-seven meters and above the rear covered porch. There's also a report from urban forestry. They're recommending refusal. They indicate that the proposal may result in removing a city-owned honey locust tree. Just going to ask, sir, have you had the opportunity to read those reports?
Yes, I have. We don't have any issues with planning's comment. As for forestry, we are not, we're not going to have any impact on the existing tree. It will stay. All the utilities will be to the north, to the north of the tree, very little impact. At this time, we have no plans to destroy the tree or injure it.
Okay, thank you. Just going to ask, is there anything that you'd like to add to the material we have on file before us this afternoon?
No, other than we believe that the variances are in keeping with some of the new builds in the area. The owners did canvass the neighborhood, speaking to neighbors. Nobody showed any concern or any issues. So we feel that the variances are minor in nature and hopefully will be approved.
Okay, thank you. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, could I get a motion on this application, please? Mr. Palmer?
Palmer, yeah, I'll move for approval meets the four tests in the Planning Act. And it's per planning condition, per the architectural plan stated May fourteenth, twenty-one, re-second floor length. And subject to the forestry permit, if required.
Thank you. Summon to second Mr. Palmer's motion. Ms. McCloskey seconds. All those in favor? Opposed? Ms. Ruddock, are you opposed or in favor? You're in favor? In favor? Okay, thank you. Sir, your application is unanimously approved, subject to urban forestry and city planning conditions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We're now on item number twenty-four, five Cutler Crescent. I have six people registered to speak. The agent is Joe Sabatino. Are you there, Mr. Sabatino?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you, sir. I just wanted to ask, I noticed there's a couple of, couple of comments from city staff relating to your application. There's one from City Planning dated the fifth of July, twenty-twenty-one. They were recommending your applicant, your application be deferred. They'd like to see some revisions to the proposal. If not, if it's not deferred, to be refused. And we had a follow-up memo from that dated the eighth of July, an email from planning indicating that those comments are still applicable. We have recommended conditions from urban, from urban forestry, and we also have a report from, a letter from Councillor Grimes dated the ninth of July, and he also supports deferring the application. I just wanted to ask, sir, would you like to defer your application, or would you like it heard today?
No, I'd like to defer it, please.
Okay, all right. I will. We have other people registered to speak, sir, so if you can give a, the committee a presentation on what you see as the merits of your proposal, and especially in light of what City Planning has said.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
I just wanted to ask, sir, are you proposing to make any revisions to your application?
Yes, we did. We, we put in revisions, I believe, on the seventh.
Hang on, just a second, sir. Did you say, I thought you said you didn't want to defer your application?
No, he wants to defer.
I do want to defer it.
My mistake.
I want to defer it, yes.
You want to defer, okay. I just have to ask the other deputants if they have an objection to that. Thank you very much. Anna and Richard Cowland, are you there?
Yes, we are.
The applicant is requesting a deferral. Would you have an objection if he defers his application?
That will be fine.
Okay, thank you. Teresa and John Silveira, are you there? Teresa and John Silveira.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I'm not able to find them on the, on the web app.
Thank you. Myra Pendek, are you there?
I am.
Would, just to ask, madam, the applicant is requesting a deferral. Would you object to, to the applicant deferring his application?
No objection.
Okay, thank you. Next person on the list, Julia Dempsey, are you there?
Hi, yes, I am.
Yes. Do you have an objection to the applicant deferring his application?
No, that is okay with me.
Okay, thank you. Terry Mark and Douglas Mark, are you there?
Yes.
Do you have an objection to the applicant deferring his application?
No, we have no objection.
Okay, thank you. We'll go back to the agent, Mr. Sabatino. I have a request from Mr. Sabatino to defer his application. Could I get a motion on his deferral request?
I move to accept the request for the deferral of the applicant.
Okay, thank you very much. I forgot to ask, Mr. Sabatino, what's the, is the purpose of your deferral to meet with City Planning?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. Were you intending to meet with the affected neighbors as well?
Once we have the, the final revisions of what we can do, and we meet with planning, we will talk to the neighbors to show them what our proposal is.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion from Ms. Ruddock to defer the application. Can I get someone to second that, please? Ms. McCloskey seconds. All those in favor? That deferral motion carries. Sir, your application is deferred to the next available meeting, so that you can meet with City Planning as well as the affected neighbors. Good luck, sir.
Thank you.
Item number twenty-five. Item number thirty, item number twenty-five, thirty-eight Avonhurst. I have one person registered to speak, I have two people registered to speak. Is a Marshall Peebles there? Marshall Peebles? Marshall Peebles, are you there?
Through, through you, Mr. Chair, I believe it is Paul Raff, who will be presenting the application, but we weren't able to reach them during soundcheck. Hopefully, he's there now. Paul? You're unmuted.
Is it R-A-T-H?
R-R-A-F-F. Paul, I've unmuted you. Are you able to hear us?
Hello, sir? Are you there? You know what, Ms. Zortos, I'm going to sit this application down, and we'll go to item number twenty-six. We'll come back to it. Now, on item number twenty-six, twenty-eight Nolan Drive. I have actually two people registered to speak, but they're all with the, they're all with the applicant or the agent. Is Mark Mitchell there?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. My name is Mark.
Yes, thank you.
My name is Mark. Yep.
And your full name and address, please?
Mark Mitchell, one oh seven Manor Road East, City of Toronto.
Great, thank you, sir. Looking at your file, we have only one set of comments from city staff. That's some city planning and a report of the twenty-third of June, and they have no objections to your application. I think it's pretty clear what you're asking for in the, I think it's two variances we have before us. Just wanted to ask, sir, is there, is there anything that you'd like to tell the committee that isn't contained in the material that we have before us today?
No, well, I'll try to be very brief. Just the unique slope of the lot that allows for the existing garage at basement level. for the existing garage at basement level impacts those two variances that we're looking for. So as planning said, if we don't consider the floor space of the basement, then we are at point four nine seven floor space index, which as planning said there, you know, has, has been improved many times in the past.
Okay, thank you, sir. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? Could I get a motion on this application, please? Mr. Kumerick?
Sure, I'll chime in. I find the application to be minor, and meeting the four tests, and therefore would like to move approval without any conditions.
Okay, thank you very much. Summon to second Mr. Kumerick's motion. Ms. McCloskey seconds, all those in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Sir, your application's been unanimously approved without condition.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We'll go back to our previous application, thirty-eight Avonhurst Road. Ms. Zortos, were we able to get a hold of the agent?
Unmuted.
Okay, thank you. Can I get your full name and address, please?
I don't hear them.
Hello, sir? Can I get your full name and address? Hello, sir, can I get your?
Hello, hello.
Yes, can I get your?
Hello.
Can I get your?
Are they asking for me? Hello?
Sir, can you hear us?
Can you hear me? Hello? Ah, good. Okay.
You're not coming through, sir.
Mr. Raff, we can hear you. Can you hear us? I've unmuted you.
I can hear you. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, sir. Can I get your full name and address, please?
My name is Paul Raff. I'm the architect. My address is seven oh three Forest Street West, Toronto.
Sir, it's very hard to hear you. It's very hard to hear you. Are you speaking through speakerphone?
No, I am not. I'm speaking through the telephone.
That's better.
So my name is Paul Raff, and the address of my firm, I'm the architect, is seven oh three Forest Street West.
Okay, if you'd like to give, I've got one other person registered to speak. And I note that there's with your, with respect to your application, there's a report on file from city planning dated the twenty-fourth of June, which appears to indicate that they have no objections to your application, provided that the proposed development is constructed is illustrated on the site plan drawing, submitted May twenty-sixth, not twenty twenty-one, and held on file by the committee of adjustment as they relate to the proposed side yard setbacks. Have you had the opportunity to read that report, sir?
Yes, I have, and we are agreeable.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything you'd like to, let me see, we have one other person registered to speak, so if you'd like to give the committee a brief presentation on what you see as the merits of your proposal?
Yes, so this is a proposal to construct a simple, small two-story addition on the side of the house. It is an unusual property in that it currently has two garages. We are proposing to demolish one garage at the rear of the property. The footprint of the garage being demolished is actually greater than the footprint of the addition, so we're actually increasing the landscape open space. The addition is intended to allow for the house to become accessible for mobility and aging and place issues. We are reconstructing the stair to be code compliant and allow it to use a chairlift. That, that is its intended purpose, and to allow the kitchen to become accessible. It is, there is a side yard setback issue, it's an aggregate issue, it's actually triggered by an existing garage on the north side of the property. We don't have a setback per se for the addition we're proposing, but the aggregate setback is slightly in excess of what is allowed. There is also a existing upper level terrace, which we are making safe and accessible, and the other second variance is for that terrace, the size of it.
Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? Being none, we'll go to the next person on our registered speaker on our list. I have a Shelley McDonald, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Yes, Ms. McDonald, can I get your full name and address, please?
Shelley McDonald, twenty-six Avonhurst Road.
Okay, thank you, madam, if you'd like to give us your thoughts on this application?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. My husband and I own number twenty-six Avonhurst Road, which despite the wonky numbering system is right next door to number thirty-eight. We've been neighbors of the Mugridges since we moved in in two thousand and three and have enjoyed friendly relationship with them. As a result, the owner Diane Mugridges kept us apprised of her plans for this latest addition. And our concern just lies in the plan for a second story deck. I think the previous speaker just referred to it as an existing upper terrace, and I'd just like to clarify, it's not a terrace at this point, it's simply a roof. The upper deck is purported to be even, the new deck, purported to be almost sixteen square meters, I believe, where the allowance, I think, is four square meters. The decks on, what they're planning to build is on the south side of Mugridge House, which will allow anyone using it to see directly down into our backyard, and in fact overlooking our outdoor dining area. So we've been talking with Diane Mugridge about this, and we've been verbally assured by her that the plans will be modified to incorporate permanent privacy screening, although the plans we were shown and those I think being reviewed here today don't show this. So we thought it was important to just express our concerns, and I'm participating for that reason, just to make our concerns especially a matter of public record and ask what can be done. That's all.
Okay, thank you very much, madam. I'll go back to our, I'm sorry, is there any questions of the speaker? There being none, I'll go back to the agent, sir, are you there?
Yes, I am.
You've heard the comments from Ms. McDonald?
Yes, I have.
Now, are you proposing to put privacy screening on those, those platforms?
No, they, yes, yes and no. So I agree with everything that the speaker said, and the owner has indeed had this conversation and is agreeable to a privacy screen on the south side. This conversation was subsequent to the submission of plans to the city, but we are agreeable especially to making the guard on the south side of the property opaque, so that sightlines particularly from a seated position are completely private.
Okay, thank you. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, could I get a motion on this application, please?
I'll move to approve the, yes, I'll move to approve the application, consider it minor in nature and meet support tests, subject to planning condition one, be tied to the May twenty-six twenty twenty-one plans. In addition to, I'm not sure how we add the privacy screening condition as well.
And that's, and you would have to add that that's not in the city planning conditions. Did you want to add that as a condition?
I think, yes, I would.
Okay. I would have, we have a motion for Ms. McCloskey to approve the application subject to the city planning conditions, as well as the installation of privacy screening along the, along the platform areas. Summon to second that motion? Ms. Ruddock seconds, all those in favor? That motion carries unanimously. Sir, your application's been unanimously approved, subject to city planning conditions and the installation of privacy screening on the platform areas.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Thank you. Item number twenty-seven, seven Kingsmill Road. I have one person registered to speak, that's Pamela Pan, are you there?
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. Chair and the committee members.
Thank you. Hello, can I get your full name and address, please?
Pamela Pan, address is sixteen Rexford Road.
Okay, thank you, madam. I just wanted to add, as going through your file, I note that there was just one staff comment, that was from the Toronto Transit Commission, and they were, it's basically advisory comments, so I just wanted to make sure you're aware of them. Have you had the opportunity to read those comments, madam, from the TTC?
Oh, I'm, I'm confused, because I have not seen any plus, this is just a deck.
I understand that, madam, but it's, it's a, have you had the opportunity to, did you look in your file and, and look at the, those comments from the TTC?
Oh, actually, I have, I have not seen it. Do you mind letting me know? I, I don't, I don't want to keep you there.
Okay, madam, they're just indicating that they have no comments on the deck foundations, but they're indicating, however, if there are renovations occurring to the house, the owner should be, be made aware of the following comments. So you need to be aware of them, they're not apparently conditions, but you just need to be aware of them. Have you read them?
Yes, okay, got it.
You've read them, okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
Do you have, it's pretty clear what you're asking for in, in the variance, it's just one variance. I'm just going to ask, is there anything that you'd like to tell the committee that isn't in the material that we have before us this afternoon?
I just want to make sure that you have seen my, the photo I have submitted regarding the next door, number nine, Kingsmill Road. So that says there will be no negative impact direct neighbor, which is number nine, because number nine has quite a substantial extension, and so that's what I want to just bring attention to the committee. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, madam. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There being none, can I get a motion on this application, please? Mr. Kumerick?
I find the application to be very minor, and meeting all the four tests, and would therefore like to propose approval with no conditions.
Okay, thank you. Does the, summon to second Mr. Kumerick's motion? Ms. Ruddock, are you in favor? No? Okay, thank you.
I am, I was just, yeah, I was just reading the TTC, I'm in favor, I was just reading the TTC memo, and it seems like they appear to be, I just want to clarify that they're not conditions, like it seems like they're suggesting that things need to be done before getting a permit, so if they don't need to be approved, I'm fine.
Ms. Ruddock, are you in favor, Mr. Kumerick's motion?
Yeah, can you hear me? I was just seeking clarification whether or not. I was seeking clarification on whether or not the TTC directions of suspect to seeking a permit before construction and the labors needed to be referenced to in our motion.
Okay, thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Did you hear me on that?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, so all those in favor? Ms. Ruddock, are you opposed or in favor? Or do you?
I'm abstaining. I'm abstaining.
I'm sorry, Ms. Ruddock, I'm not picking it up, I'm sorry, we're not hearing you.
I think, I think she'd just like to bring to the attention that TTC has issued a memo, and, and just, just to note that in the decision.
I'm advised that the TTC comments aren't conditions, but we've already made the applicant aware of what the TTC is, we can put that in. Ms. Zortos, can we put that in as, as a, that the applicant be advised of the TTC's comments and, and possible conditions?
I've unmuted Phil.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay, all those in favor, Mr. Kumerick's motion, amended motion? That motion carries, thank you, my apologies, Ms. Ruddock. So can we get, sir, your, your applicant, madam, your application has been approved, subject to, actually, without, subject to, there are no, without condition, and just the comments with regards to the TTC suggested comments, suggestions. Be aware of them. Okay, thank you, we have.
Yes.
We have the afternoon session to start, you want, would you, committee like to take a ten-minute break before, before we start the next session? Okay, I see, ten minutes, okay, we'll take ten minutes and come back.
Hi, everyone, thank you for your patience. I'm gonna start soundchecking for the three P M. time slot. Angela Caljouvin? Hello, Angela?
Yes, we're here, thank you.
Hi there, which application are you here for?
To Wilmar Road.
Okay, just give me one second.
It's not muted. It's not.
Sorry, and you're, and you're from three nine oh nine Blor Street?
That's correct. Anthony?
Yes, here.
Hi there, you're also here for two Wilmar?
That's correct.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Anthony? Lasopolis?
Speaking here, can you hear me?
Hi there, yes, I can hear you now. And you're here for item thirty-three, eight Yorklea? Okay, great, thank you. Charles?
Yes, this is Charles MacLeod.
Hi there, and you're here for which item?
Item twenty-eight.
Okay, great, thank you. David Neelgen? Hello, David? Hello, Fiona?
Property 52 Cherry Lane.
Hello, Fiona?
Here again.
Hello?
So don't put it in the address line.
Are you here for another item in the 3:00 PM session? If, if, if you're not? Franco?
Yes, good afternoon. Hi, I'm here for 29.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Graham?
Yes, hello.
For 152 Sheldon.
Correct.
Okay. Pardon?
You can hear me clearly?
Yes, that's great, thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
Hillary and David?